Well, you can tell by the way I use my walk, I'm a woman's man, no time to talk. Music loud, women warm, been kicked around since I was born. Now it's alright, that's okay, and you may look the other way. We can try, wonders made, New York Times, oh man, oh man. Whether you're a brother or a wife, whether you're a mother, you're staying alive, staying alive. Feel the city breaking and everybody shaking, you're staying alive, staying alive. Ah, 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 staying alive, staying alive. Ah, 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 staying alive. Oh, hey, boy! Well, now I get low when I get high, and if I can't get in, I'll be the try. At the window, I've never known my shoes, I'm a dancer man, I can just stay loose. Now it's alright, it's okay, I'd like to see another dance. We can try, wonders made, New York Times, oh man, oh man. Whether you're a brother or a wife, whether you're a mother, you're staying alive, staying alive. Feel the city breaking and everybody shaking, you're staying alive, staying alive. Ah, 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 staying alive. Oh, hey, boy! Well, now I get low when I get high, and if I can't get in, I'll be the try. At the window, I've never known my shoes, I'm a dancer man, I can just stay loose. Now it's alright, it's okay, I'd like to see another dance. We can try, wonders made, New York Times, oh man, oh man. Whether you're a brother or a wife, whether you're a mother, you're staying alive, staying alive. Feel the city breaking and everybody shaking, you're staying alive, staying alive. Ah, 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 staying alive, staying alive. Ah, 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 staying alive. I go nowhere, somebody help me, somebody help me, yeah. I go nowhere, 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 somebody help me, yeah.
Everyone, my name is Jamie Rickman, Community Engagement Manager for the City of Las Cruces. Welcome tonight to our Cannabis Interactive Town Hall meeting. Thank you for coming. We have a few housekeeping issues to take care of that I'll go through really quickly. First, are there any Spanish speakers in the audience who need interpretive services? Okay, with that, the restrooms are across the hall where the elevators are located, in that general area. For masks and room management, we are on the honor system. We are not asking you to have, if you have or have not been vaccinated, please understand that there are many, there may be community members attending who have not been vaccinated for whatever that reason is. If anyone feels they need to wear a mask because of this, please feel free to do so. If you need a mask, we have some available at the reception desk. So, also, we have a sign-in sheet at the back of the room. I think everyone has signed in, so I appreciate that very much. That way, we can keep in touch with you. And there are also agendas. During this presentation, during the meeting, we will have three-by-five cards available to you to write down your questions and comments, and also pencils available that we'll pass around. So when you need a card, or if you have a card to turn in, just raise your hand for us. And one of us will be coming around the room to collect that or to deliver that to you. So thank you very much. When we get to the point of allowing the audience questions, we must insist that you speak only when you have a microphone, which we will walk to you. And the reason for that is that this meeting is being recorded. And so we want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard, and heard well for the quality. And then there will be a recording of this later available on YouTube for anyone to be able to view it. This meeting, up to the point of the breakout session, is being streamed live on Facebook. And like I said, the recording will be available on YouTube. Remember that the public input for this topic is a process that is occurring over a period of time. Everyone will have ample opportunity to voice their concerns and questions. After this presentation tonight, if you think of anything you would like to have asked or further clarification on anything, please email those comments and questions to cannabis@las-cruces.org. This email address is on tonight's paper agenda. Remember that we have a survey available through August 15th. The digital survey is on our website and provides super easy access to maps. If you're unable for any reason to use the digital survey online, we have paper surveys available at the table outside of chambers. Both versions are in English and Spanish. In going through the agenda, we will start with the presentation, then have a period for questions from the audience. Mr. Tomopial and Ms. Harrison Rogers will provide instruction on the interactive exercise and breakout session. Then we will have a breakout session where you can speak directly with our area experts in community development, public safety, legal, economic development, and others. After some time, we will stop the breakout session, and you will return to your seats so we can engage in wrap-up questions. We're looking to end the event about seven o'clock or so, or as close as possible. The next town hall meeting, it will be on August 12th at this location, and where we will be reporting back to you some of the results of the survey and some other information as it develops. And we want to bring your attention to also the podcast that's called "Las Cruces Responding", if you'd like to talk about that.
Thank you so much for joining us today. As an effort to reach more people in the community, the City of Las Cruces has launched a podcast. It's currently available in Spotify, and it's also going to be available in Apple Podcasts. You can go and download it right now, especially if you're Android. You can listen to it. The first episode is actually about cannabis. And we cover a lot of the questions that you might already have. In the podcast, we were able to have, as a guest, Assistant City Manager Ikani Tomopial, and also Counselor Gabriel Vasquez. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carla, very much. At this time, are there any questions for the housekeeping information so far? I know that was kind of a lot, but we just want to make sure we have everything covered. And then finally, we want to recognize and thank personnel from our communications office, facilities, and IT department for supporting this meeting tonight. With that, I will turn the mic over to Mr. Tomopial. Sir?
Thank you, Jamie. I appreciate it. Hello, everyone. My name is Ikani Tomopial. I am the Assistant City Manager for the City of Las Cruces. And it's a pleasure to be here in front of you all today. Before I begin, I just want to let you know that although I am here in front of you in a brief time, you will see a team come up. And I want to acknowledge the presence of my staff, who has helped. We have economic development here on this side, Francisco Payades. We have the community development team, Larry, Catherine, and Dr. Pitts, and David Weir as well. We have our legal staff here with us. We have facilities who helped put this together. We have Chief Smith, DC Brock and DC Danes from the LCPD Department. And then we have, again, community engagement and our PIO staff, who's making this possible, hosting this meeting, and also making this possible for those who are watching online on YouTube and all the different other forums that we have, in addition to Starkey and our other crew. Did I miss anybody? And Councilmember Vasquez, always a pleasure to have a council member here with us today. Okay, so I wanted to introduce myself a bit. And again, this will be an interactive presentation. But this portion of the presentation, if we can hold Q and A until the interactive session after. As Jamie mentioned, what we're going to do is, my staff and I, we will present this PowerPoint presentation. And then we'll have an opportunity to really have a Q and A opportunity before we go into breakout sessions, where people can come up and come and talk to economic development, come and talk to community development, come and talk to our FIRE and PD staff as well. But I just wanted to lay that out, so questions, we will have an opportunity for questions, but it will be after the PowerPoint. Now for introductions, I've been with the city since January. I arrived in the city, I came from California, I was born and raised in California, but I've also worked in local government in California. The reason why I bring that up is because I was there when they legalized cannabis, and I was the point of contact and running lead on that for the city I was at. And so I know a little bit about cannabis, just really on the regulation side. And so when California legalized cannabis, that is totally different from what's happening here in New Mexico. In California, when the state approved and legalized adult-use cannabis, it allowed local cities and municipalities to opt out. And so city councils had the opportunity to opt out. They could completely ban recreational cannabis in the city, or they could be creative and allow dispensaries and not the other business types. Or they could allow for cultivation and ban everything else. I just wanted to share that that was the flexibility that city councils were given. In addition, they could have a local tax option that was regulated amongst local jurisdictions as well. That is different from the landscape that is happening here under Cannabis Regulation House Bill II. Here in New Mexico, what is happening is, once this was approved by the state earlier this year, in April, and effective in June 29th of this year, the city councils do not have the local autonomy that we saw in California or even Colorado. When the state approved it at the state level, city councils are not lawfully allowed to ban them completely. We really have the regulations, and it's stated in House Bill II, that cities really have the focus of regulating time, place, and manner. And so I just wanted to share that with you. As we go into the presentation, there may be some questions that you might have on the back of your mind, but just wanted to share what the landscape is like in New Mexico. The timelines that I touched on, the Cannabis Regulation Act was approved earlier this year in April, went into effect in June of this year. There's a compressed timeline happening between June and September 1st, 2021. The state is accepting applications for producers, for cultivators, and micro-business producers. That's happening September 1st. On January 1st, all other business types of cannabis, and there's about 10 business types that's stated in House Bill II legislation, those will be accepted on January 1st of this upcoming year. And then no later than April 1st, 2022, retail and cannabis dispensaries can commence the selling of cannabis. So April 1st is when the, no later than April 1st, so it could actually be sooner than April 1st, the sale of cannabis. So I just wanted to share this timeline with you, because it may appear to some that we're really hitting this compressed timeline, but just wanted to share some of the factors, some of the pressures that are happening in the state. And so we, as the city, we don't want to be behind. And so we're really aligning ourselves with a September, within September, to be ready to have regulation. We're going to have recommendations to city council by the state, and hopefully, we'll have some direction and ordinance approved by September. But digging in deeper into this compressed timeline that we have, we have a timeline of community forums that we have been reaching out to the public. So yesterday, we had Economic Development Policy Review Committee. Today, we are currently in the, we had Quality of Life, PRC, that was earlier today in conference hall. And right now, we're at the first Cannabis Town Hall meeting. On Monday coming up, we will have a work session that cannabis will be brought up for the first time for the full council. And then that Tuesday of next week, this will come in front of Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation of zoning for this to PNZ. Then we'll have the second Town Hall Cannabis Meeting on August 12th. And then on August 16th, we'll have the first council meeting, where this will be discussed to the full council in a formal city council meeting. But before the 16th, we have the deadline of August 15th. Currently, we have a cannabis survey out for 30 days. It's been out since July 15th, and it will close on August 15th at midnight. So I would share that, promote that. In this cannabis survey, it is asking where you, the community, would like to zone these 10 business types, where you would like to zone dispensaries, where you would like to locate cultivators and manufacturers. And I'll ask other questions as well. So if you haven't taken that, please take it when you get a chance. And then if, we'll get to September 7th, where we'll have the second council meeting. And then if we need any additional council meetings, we'll go from there. But I just wanted to share with everybody in the room that we'll have some opportunities where the public can come engage with us and meet with us. This won't be the last time to talk with us. And then also, we have an email that you can reach out anytime at cannabis@las-cruces.org if there's any questions or clarifications needed. So let's get into the House Bill II and regulation. Possession and cultivation limits. Cannabis for adults 21 or over are allowed. So obviously, anyone under minor, this would be a violation. But those 21 and older, these are the rules, that you cannot possess more than two ounces of cannabis, 16 grams of concentrated cannabis, and 800 milligrams of edible cannabis. If you exceed or surpass these limits, then that's fine, but they have to be stored in a locked space at a person's residence not visible from the public. Per household, individuals that are 21 and older, you're allowed to have six mature plants and six immature plants. But you're not able to, per individual, grow more than that. If you have additional 21-year-old and over individuals in the household, the total and max for that household can have more than 12 mature plants in that household at one time. If that does occur, then that's a fourth-degree felony, if you have more than 12 mature plants in a household. And things that are allowed in the household, you can have cannabis-infused foods at home. You can even perform extracts, but these extracts cannot involve volatile solvents, which are flammable and dangerous. Smoking areas. So which areas in the city would be possible to smoke cannabis? With the legislation, what they essentially did was, wherever you're allowed to smoke tobacco and cigarettes, they essentially lumped everything, and lumped cannabis in the same smoking areas. So prohibited are public areas, but what's allowed are your private residence and indoor and/or outdoor consumption areas with certain requirements. This is one of the cannabis business types, one of the 10 cannabis business types. And then everything under tobacco, retail store, cigar bar, casinos, designated outdoor smoking areas, private clubs, hotel and motels, rooms designated as smoking, permitted rooms, but can't be more than 10% of the net rooms in a hotel. Those are all, that was all legislation that was already set for tobacco. So essentially, wasn't anything new. Cannabis was essentially just allowed to come in with the same rules that tobacco had. But one difference was, there will be a business license allowed for indoor and outdoor consumption areas that the state will apply if you don't fall under any of these other sections, and you wanted a consumption area for cannabis on-site. Buffer distance. In the state conditions, it states that all cannabis uses and industries must be a maximum of 300 feet from schools and daycares. And again, this is a maximum. This essentially is a cap and a threshold, so that you can't surpass 300 feet. Just for example, in California, when I was there, California set from sensitive areas a minimum of 600 feet. So that was the minimum. So you couldn't go anywhere lower than 600 feet. But local jurisdictions had the autonomy to go above that. Different, here in New Mexico, they kept at 300. So if a resident or a family wanted to say, hey, let's go 600, 1,000 feet from these sensitive areas, that's not possible. What's considered a sensitive area? Under state statute, a sensitive area is considered school and daycare center. Not a church, not drug treatment centers, really just schools and daycare centers by state statute. So I just wanted to share, Phoenix, Denver, Ann Arbor, there's about, from schools, about 1,000 feet. Los Angeles, 1,000 feet, Sacramento, just really sharing some comparables. Childcare in these cities as well, really shows that where we are on the metrics, our sensitive area, where 300 feet max, really compares to some parts of the nation. State cannabis licensing. Essentially, if you submit a business application to the state, there's 90 days that they have to deny or approve. Within that 90 days, the city will work with the state and that business to work with the provisional license. And there's a process that our community development will talk about. But applicants may not have prior convictions substantially related to the qualifications, functions, or duties. Essentially, embezzlement, fraud, deceit, sale to a minor. If that's on your record, you cannot apply for a business license. But if you have a prior conviction on cannabis, that is allowed. Because in the state statute, they expunged records for any prior convictions on cannabis. So again, it does not include cannabis convictions, so you are okay to apply for a state business license if you so choose. Business requirements and regulations. Cannabis Control Division will develop rules consistent with industry standards based on advertising, health and safety, testing, labeling, packing regarding additives, quality control, environmental protections. And we'll dive in a bit deeper. For example, packaging and advertising. The big one for this is packaging, just like similar to other states, cannot be designed to appeal to minors and must be child-resistant. Warnings must be included with New Mexico's Poison Control. And interesting enough, advertising is banned on TV, radio, and mass transit, but is allowed on subscription-based media for adults to opt in. Again, no predatory marketing, targeting minors, using cartoon caricatures, mimic other, you can't mimic other brands. Billboards in the state, in the state legislation, they are allowed, but you have to be 300 feet away from sensitive areas, and you can't be viewed within 300 feet of sensitive areas as well. Diversity and inclusion. This, a big part of this diversity and inclusion was the state wanted to ensure that all people from all types of communities were encouraged to participate in the cannabis industry. And so essentially, the move from the state to do this was to really help disproportionately harmed communities and areas that had effects by rates of arrest due to enforcement of cannabis prohibitions to really allow them to have the opportunity to apply. So the mere act of them expunging the record of prior cannabis convictions allowed for diversity inclusion. So this was one of the things that was huge for the state to pass. And once they did this, really opened the door for those in the underserved areas that may have had some prior cannabis convictions to have an opportunity to succeed in the business. Public health and education. So some of the challenges that we may have thought about. Driving under the influence, the cannabis influence. Right now, there is not a breathalyzer test. There is no standard breath test. So the state does allow performance of roadside sobriety test to ensure that drivers are not driving impaired. Public health education. There's 15 professionals that should be selected by September 1st. These 15 professionals are from the health, from the medicine, epidemiologists. These are occupational safety specialists. There will be a committee formed by these 15 professionals selected by September 1st. And starting December 1st of 2024, a report will be produced for the whole state that touches on health effects of legalization, child access, workplace safety, road safety, and consumer safety. This is done on a state level. One of the things that we, the staff, is doing with economic development and our local economist who's on staff, is we wanted to really look down and to, and focus on here in the City of Las Cruces. So these are some of the indicators that our local economist on staff is already scrubbing, looking at active patients, these demand indicators and supply indicators. I won't go over all of this, but this is just for you to review, that these are things that they're tracking. We are aware that there are other indicators that are not even yet been identified, which we'll have to work with LCPD, work with our local medical centers, and see what data that are public that we could actually use for data as well. But this is something that's important, because although the state will do their report in 2024, we felt it important as well for City of Las Cruces to have local numbers to ensure what's happening here from the local region. And some graphs from some of those data. So local control. Municipalities and counties may adopt time, place, and manner rules. And this is the extent of local autonomy here in New Mexico. We can't completely ban them based on the state legislation, but we can zone them into areas that you think are appropriate, and then council approves that. So these include the rules that reasonably limiting density of licenses and operating times consistent with neighborhood uses. Cities may not completely prohibit, as I mentioned, the operation of a license. Cities cannot prohibit the transportation of a cannabis industry passing through the city. And the cities cannot restrict signage at licensed cannabis businesses that identify them. And cities cannot prohibit personal home cultivation. The cannabis excise tax. There is an excise tax built into the state statute that allows up to 12%, that allows 12% before the year 2024. And of that 12%, 33% of that excise tax goes back to the City of Las Cruces. So 12%, of that 12%, 33% of that 12% equals 4%. 4% is essentially what the city would get. And so it goes from 12, 13, all the way to 18% by 2030. And 33% that goes to City of Las Cruces equals about 6% in 2030. The growth, the GRT is about 8%. And so what happens here is, you're going to have this GRT on top of excise tax. And collectively, it's about 20.3% total up to 2024. This shares that on adult-use cannabis, there is the compound effect of excise tax along with GRT on adult use. On medical cannabis, there is, excise tax is not charged, and GRT is not charged on medical cannabis. Again, this is what it'll be up to 2024, once retail starts, and then 2030, up to 2030. Again, this is what it'll be in up to 2024, once retail starts and then 2030, up to 2030 each year, there'll be a 1% bump. So now I'll turn over the time to my team. We'll have Catherine Rogers from Community Development take over cannabis land use implications and recommendations. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Connie. So I'm going to talk about where we're leaning in terms of zoning these particular uses. I know that we've already discussed the time, place, and manner and what we can and cannot do within the city. But what I'll do is I'll jump right into the recommendations in terms of zoning. We have these four definitions in terms of businesses that we've, we are proposing to add to our existing zoning code. These, these sort of fold in several of the businesses that the state is specifying. So right now, in terms of cannabis retail, we're recommending that those go into our regular retail zones. So those are our commercial zones, C1, C2, and C3. Something to note is that in the C1 zones, we're requesting that there be no onsite consumption. However, the other two zones, that that would be perfectly appropriate. Reason behind that is we have to look at like uses or what we feel might be the most appropriate place for these. The C1 zone is really intended for really small neighborhood uses and generally consist of very, very small facilities. And at this time, they don't allow for breweries or wineries or bars or things of that nature. It really is a much sort of smaller scale commercial. And that's why we've requested this at that time. So some of the other things to note is we have cannabis industry. That's sort of a catchall for the cultivation, the production, the packaging, the warehousing, the extraction, things of that nature. And we're requesting that those are, are to be housed in our industrial zones. M1, M2 is our industrial standard. M3 is a really heavy industrial type of use. Cannabis research laboratories, again, we're requesting that those be placed in our industrial zones. MT is, is one addition to this list. That's essentially industrial technology. It really is intended for research types of uses and that we thought that was appropriate at that location. And then cannabis microbusinesses. This is not to be confused with the state's very specific rules regarding microbusinesses because ultimately those industrial zones would allow for a cannabis microbusiness as defined by the state. This is really intended to provide an opportunity in our rural residential zones where agriculture is expected to allow people to be able to grow and then produce and then also sell cannabis at those, those locations. There are some restrictions surrounding these and so I'm going to go over those in a second. This gives you a good idea of the types of zoning that we're talking about. So the green areas are those rural and agricultural zones where one might be able to do those small scale businesses in conjunction with their own home. The red is what we have currently as our commercial zones where we would find the retail for either onsite or no onsite consumption. And then the purple is our industrial zones. Now we have a couple of teal colors in here. So something I would like to point out, if you can see the mouse, this teal area is really an industrial zone. And that really specifically does call out cannabis as, as allowed uses. This is our, what's been known as the West Mason Industrial Park, soon to be known as the Las Cruces Innovation and Industrial Park. Cannabis is, is something that's being considered at that location. You can see that this is the university corridor district. We have downtown, South Mesquite and North Mesquite districts. That's what these teal areas represent and they generally have a mixture of uses in those areas. Some conditions that the city is recommending regarding these cannabis uses is to go with the, the state cap of the 300 feet from a school or daycare and that is all uses. For the cannabis retail retailer, we're recommending that they stay 300 feet from resident, single family residential zones. And then that they're dispersed throughout the city and, and that would be achieved through a thousand foot buffer from, from one another. Now, there is a way to, to, to go less than that. That would require a special use permit, which does require a public hearing in front of our planning and zoning commission. So there are some due process opportunities in order to be less than those buffers that are indicated there. Another thing to state is the cannabis industry. You can have accessory retail to that. There are some limitations in size. It's limited to 49% of the total square footage of, of, of the industry itself. And then the cannabis microbusiness that I talked about previously, that does require a special use permit. It is being allowed in, in what we call the equestrian estate and the rural estate mobile zones. Again, those allow for different types of horticulture. These must be accessory to a primary residence on the site, limited to no more than 200 mature plants. The products for sale on the site must be grown there. And of course, they have to be located in a fully enclosed accessory building. And, and again, we're recommending that they be 100 feet from other residences. So essentially other, other neighbors. These are large lots. These are not small lots that you normally see in the core of town. So these are, these are larger areas. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Tim Pitts. He'll talk a little bit about the business registration process and then we'll go from
Yes, thank you, Catherine. Just some pictures that we have of, of some facilities that we're anticipating coming here. Again, I'm Tim Pitts. I'm director of, sorry, deputy director for building and development. So I handle the processing of permits and, and business registration. So I'll be the, it'll be my group that you'll come through to actually get a permit or, or get a, a business registration. So some things that we're expecting, maybe we've been looking just to give some idea of what we are expecting to see from, from the retail side of things, some retail front, frontage. This is the type of thing we're expecting. Busy slide, so I'll just very quickly go over this one. These are things that we're, we're looking into in terms of the, the ordinances that the city has to be allowed to regulate cannabis. So section, chapter five of our municipal code, for instance, currently deals with alcohol. We're proposing to bring cannabis regulations into that. We will, we will be bringing that before city council as we do. Chapter 16 deals with our business licenses and taxation. We're proposing to bring cannabis in there. And then on the right side of this slide is the, is the fee schedule. I want to point out, this is not the City of Las Cruces fee schedule. This is the state's fee schedule, just for informational purposes for you. The City of Las Cruces is, is not, as we understand the legislation, is not given the ability to charge additional fees for cannabis over and above what this, what the state is, is charging. We can only charge what we would charge any other business to do business. So for currently, that is a $35 business registration fee that is in, both in state statute and in, in city ordinance. So that's what we would be proposing for this, for this process. This may be a hard slide to read. I'll kind of run you through it very quickly. Unfortunately, between the time I did this presentation earlier today and, and right now, I have been informed by the Cannabis Control Division that this is not the way they want to propose us doing it. They want us to start the process. So they want us to take the first license application and, and then it get processed up to the state after we begin our process. So we will be modifying the, the, the flow chart to, to handle that. We are working in conjunction with the state Cannabis Control Division. We anticipate a lot of, a lot of changes as we go forward, as they, as their process, as processes are finalized. And as, as they do that, we'll, we'll be changing our processes. But I, I've given my commitment to, to our, our city management team that we will be prepared to take a business registration for a cannabis business the day the state is, is able to take an application for a cannabis business. So the city will not be holding up any cannabis activity based on any processing we'll do. So our processes will work and we are working in different ways of, of making this, making this happen. So I can't promise you today that on September 1st, you'll do it this way, but I can promise you that on September 1st, there will be a process for you to follow that will be, will be in accordance with statute and CCD rules and city ordinance. Just a quick rundown of what this is telling you we're going to do is you're going to come in or an applicant will come in with a business registration the same way as if you were opening a, a beef jerky stand. You would come in with your, with your application and we would run it through our same processes. We review for building code compliance, that your business is in a building that is safe and meets all the building code requirements. For instance, accessibility for, for people with disabilities, you know, other sorts of requirements of sanitation and, and livability and so on. And then it also meets all the fire requirements for safety, for, you know, that, that you're, you're building and, and the place you're operating does not have danger hazardous materials and in places where the hazardous material handling is, is appropriate to, to meet state and city codes. And then also to beat the zoning. You've heard the zoning. I want to make one comment about zoning because we did have one comment in, in the middle of, that 300 feet thing? We either enforce 300 feet of distance from a school or we enforce less than one 300 feet. We don't get the choice to go up to 600 feet or 800 feet. So if anybody's going to come and say, we think you should be farther away from schools, well and fine, that's that, the, the statute does not allow the city to adopt a, an ordinance that forces a cannabis business to be further than 300 feet away from a school. That's the way you should parse that word. It does not mean that they have to be within 300 feet of schools. It means we can't make them be any further away than 300 feet from a school. And that's what we'll do in this process. We'll review your, we'll review the process and so on. One of the comment I want to make about this, this is a, this is a business license application. We consider this in the, in the permitting world to be a by right application. What I mean by that is if you meet the code, the license is issued. If you don't meet the code, we may tell you, you're not meeting the code. You know, we may look at your plans and say, that doesn't meet code. We may look at your building and say, no, that building is unsafe for human habitation. But, but we, if you meet the code, we cannot deny it. Now Catherine did talk about one process and that is the special use permit, which is a discretionary permit. And that is for things like if, if two businesses wish to be closer than 1,000 feet apart, you can go to a special use permit. Now that is a discretionary, a hearing, you'll get a hearing in front of a public body who you'll present your case, other people will present their case and the body will, whether it's city council or it's the P and Z or whoever it is, will, will make a decision and render a decision. That is not by right. So if you go into that situation, you can, but I'm saying this for both sides, whether you're opening a business or you oppose a business opening. If a guy comes to me with a, with a permit, with a, a business license application and he meets every standard in our code, I will be issuing it and it doesn't matter what anybody has to say. So that's, that's how I, you need to sort of understand the process we're proposing here. And if you don't like that, then talk to your counselors and, or give us feedback or whatever you want to do and we can, we can, we can deal with it. But that's the proposal that we have here before you. All right. What else do I got? Like any business, you will need to go to the Department of Taxation and Revenue and you will need to get a CRS certificate. That is your business license, your business tax certificate and it must show where you're doing business. We understand this is an issue for, for people opening businesses because at this point, you may not know whether you're allowed to open that business. But we can't do anything else because that's the requirement we have for tax and rev. We've been working with tax and rev for many, many years. We have a very close relationship. We do not issue business licenses and business registrations to businesses that do not, are not registered in their, don't have a tax certificate in their proper location. So it's, there's going to be some rulemaking at the state. The CCD is going to be changing the way they're doing things. Right now, I'm anticipating that the license will come in. You're probably not going to bring this into me until after the state has issued their provisional letter of approval. That's what I'm, that's the terminology we're getting out of the state right now, that they will issue a provisional letter. You'll get your, your tax certificate. You'll make sure your building is prepared for occupancy and then we will eventually issue our registration and then the state will issue its license. We don't tell you whether you can sell cannabis, yes or no. That's the state. All we tell you is this location meets our standards for building, fire, and, and zoning and we are issuing you a business registration to do business in this thing. The state will tell you whether you can sell cannabis or not. Okay? Does that explain the thing? I want to make sure we're, we're, we're getting through and I'll take any questions you have afterwards. But right now I want to go to the building side and what you have to deal with on what, what sort of building issues there are. And I'm going to turn this over to our director, Mr. Larry Nichols.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, everyone. I'm Larry Nichols, Community Development Director and a building official for the City of Las Cruces. You've heard this evening about the regulations that are coming down from, from the Licensing and Regulation Department regarding cannabis facilities and operation. You've heard about the zoning and the place where you were anticipating those businesses to come about. You've heard about the licensing and the business registration. I'm going to speak to you in just a moment about the facilities that will be housing these operations. There'll be primarily will be governing those and inspecting those to our building and fire codes. Our facilities related to cannabis are under about four different categories. There are either growing facilities, extraction, dispensaries, laboratories, or supply stores. And with those, they each have a, a, an occupancy requirement. They have certain ways that they have to be constructed for building and fire safety. Existing building codes have provisions to address the needs of the industry. Those are in place. We don't have to adopt them or get them ready to use. An occupancy, for example, occupancy classification, as I mentioned, might be simply a growing facility, but we would want to calculate the area of that. In some cases, the extraction gravitates towards hazardous materials, flammable materials, storage of, of materials. And we have a, a look at that, you know, to help assure the safety of the facility. The additional codes that are applicable to facilities are the fire code and fire chiefs here tonight, Chief Smith, good to see you. The electrical component, electricity is a very important component, especially for growing facilities and the processing. And then we have our plumbing codes. We, you're going to hear a lot about the demands for water systems for these facilities and how they're going to relate to our utility system. Mechanical has a lot to do with the ventilation and the air, air exchange in these facilities. And then we have adopted the energy code recently in the City of Las Cruces and that will be applying to the facilities as well. Commercial facilities and single family dwellings. We have been studying other jurisdictions and talking to folks in Colorado and some of the other 16 or 17 states that have cannabis, recreational cannabis. They have advised us that in some cases, commercial endeavors will try to locate in single family dwellings. Will, that will not be allowed under our current proposal. The other things that are available for single family dwellings were covered earlier this, this evening about the number of plants and, and those provisions. And just with what I've just said. the number of plants and, and those provisions. And, uh, just with what I've just said, uh, uh, one of the reasons that we address this, the, the codes, uh, is for a safe, to have safe facilities. Uh, here you see the slide on, on the left, um, the one with kind of the white flash. That's in a, a slide of an extraction process going on. And, uh, the person that was doing that, that, they had some vapor and fume there and, uh, but they also had a heat gun. And when the heat gun was, uh, turned on, uh, it ignited that situation and of course caused a fire. And then the slide on the right is another example of a, of a processing or extraction facility that was located in a residence and, uh, unfortunately it created a fire. And I think with that, we're, let's see. I think we're already there.
Yeah. Yeah. Is that fire?
Yeah.
There we go. Actually, I didn't introduce him, I guess. All right, next up we have Fire Chief Smith.
Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, Jason Smith, the Fire Chief, uh, for the City of Las Cruces. Uh, tonight I'm gonna bring up, uh, Mark Dubin, our Fire Protection Engineer. We're gonna talk a little bit about our international fire code that we follow. We're underneath the 2015 and really talk about our inspection process and how we fit into, uh, licensing industry with community development. So.
Thank you, Chief Smith. My name is Mark Dubin. I'm the Fire Protection Engineer with the Las Cruces Fire Department. So currently we're under the, the 2015 International Fire Code. Um, obviously the nature of the business is what we're gonna be looking at. Tonight's topic is cannabis facilities, so that's what we're gonna look at. Currently, we're not proposing any changes to the fire code. The fire code sufficiently addresses cannabis operations and retail operations and we already deal with a number of them already in this, in the city with, uh, the medical dispensaries and those sorts of things. We inspect those the same as every other business. Um, one of the, one of the things that sometimes comes into play is security features. If there are excessive security fe- not excessive, but there are a lot of security features that would prevent us from, uh, being able to quickly respond to a, an emergency in those situations, we'll put in what's a, it's called a Knox box. And it's a, it's a secure box that allows us to, to respond to an emergency in the facility. The process is exactly as Tim Pitts described. Um, you're gonna apply for a business license. Once your business is set up and about ready to open, we'll schedule a time with you to perform an inspection, um, part of the initial business registration process. We suggest, um, meeting with, uh, with our inspectors ahead of time, especially if you're planning on buying expensive equipment like extraction equipment or things like that. A lot of times manufacturers sell the, the equipment and they'll say, "Oh, sure. It meets the fire code and you'll be fine. Don't worry about it." Um, that's not always correct. So before you do, please talk to us. We'll let you know if you can or can't do that or, or what you might also need to do besides that, that kind of equipment because we're already working with those people. Um, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Chief Smith. Thank you.
Thanks. So one thing I wanna, um, point out here is our Fire Prevention Bureau, our inspector investigators, they work well with, with all businesses and industries. So as Mark said, like, meeting with us prior to putting in a large capital investment, prior to where you think you're gonna open up your doors for, for retail or whatever your business is, uh, make sure that you come in and meet with us so that you know what the fire code is going to apply, uh, to the type of business you have at that, that occupancy. Uh, we work well with community development. We'll be looking at those exclusion zones. Uh, really, we're there to help you prior to being licensed, help you during the inspection process. And then a lot of times we work with businesses when it comes to pre and post incident collaboration. So before you have an incident at your location, uh, we're willing to work with you as well as afterwards. We have a couple of, uh, industry kind of production plants here in the city that have had accidents or fires and we work with them extensively to bring them back up into compliance and to actually reduce their risk. Uh, so with that, uh, thank you.
Next up we'll have Deputy Chief Kiri Daines.
Good evening. Um, I wanna remind everybody, as of June 4th, 2019, misdemeanor marijuana was decriminalized in New Mexico. So, um, to, you know, so not a whole lot has changed with law enforcement. Um, but LCPD has completed training, um, on these, on the new, um, possession, uh, laws. So, um, you can be assured that we're ready to go on that. There are a couple things I do wanna remind you of that are still illegal. Okay? And that's where we're probably gonna be focusing as a law enforcement agency. Um, driving under the influence is still illegal and it's treated as a DUI. So your, your fourth or, or, uh, subsequent arrest can be a felony. So hopefully none of us are gonna do that. So we're all good. But just reminding everyone, um, that that is still illegal. Okay? Also, contributing to the delinquency of a minor is still a felony. So if you give marijuana to someone 17 or younger, it's just like as if you were giving alcohol, which also can be a felony. Okay? Almost everything else dealing with, um, citations, like the smoking in public, it's a $50 civil fine. Okay? Um, possession on school property or daycare center, you notice I have an asterisk there. If there's a license or you have, uh, a, a medical marijuana card or something of that nature, then that's different. Understand, we'd have to check on that. So, um, but it probably would be a good idea not to have it on school property in general. Okay? Um, it says possession in public and a lot of people are like, "Oh my gosh, you know, what's LCP gonna do? Are they gonna search my bag?" No. Um, please probably just don't have your weed in plain sight and we'll all be good. Okay? Um, and I think everybody would appreciate that. You know, we don't want that around children, things of that nature. So, um, it's, it's kind of an interesting law because it's, if we don't see it, then it's, everybody, we good with that? Okay. Um, underage possession, that's talking about 18 to 20. Okay? Um, that's mere possession. Okay? We're not talking about selling it or anything like that. That's also a civil fine of four hours of community service or drug education. So, uh, I, I wanna stress to you that, um, we understand, um, we, we know how to, to, to screen for medical marijuana cards. We can do that through the, the state call-in system. Um, we would just ask that you follow the rules as far as consuming it in your home, um, or in the, the authorized places. Okay? Uh, and, and, and go from there. Um, we're gonna be focusing more on the impaired driving, which I think, you know, endangers everyone. Uh, and, um, very felony level, you know, trafficking of other drugs that, that are more serious, um, to the, to the community's safety. So I just wanna understand that. Um, more than likely too, um, if, if someone is smoking in public, I know I'm gonna get these questions later, I'm probably just gonna walk up and ask and go, "Can you not do that, please?" As a courtesy to everybody else. It's just like if you were smoking a cigarette around a bunch of small children. Come on, you know, let's, let's all be just cool about it and not do that around small children or events. So that's all. We're, we're gonna ask for voluntary compliance, um, because everything is pretty much, um, a civil, a criminal citation unless, um, we're looking at major amounts of felony, um, trafficking, giving it to minors, um, and driving under the influence. So I just wanna assure you of that. If you have any more specific questions, um, please come and talk to us. Understand, we have nothing to do with regulation. That is all set by the state and through the state regulatory body. We do not control regulation. So it's, we're only on the, the small part of the criminal side that we can enforce. But again, if you have any questions, feel free to come out and speak to us later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, uh, Kiri Daines. Appreciate it. All right. So before we get to questions, just wanna, uh, let people know, uh, we have breakout sessions planned, but before we do breakout sessions, we're gonna have, uh, some questions. And before we get to questions, um, I'm gonna have, uh, Councilor Vasquez come up and, and say a few words. All right, Councilor?
Buenas tardes, buenas noches. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Gabe Vasquez. I'm the City Council for District 3. And I think we're in an exciting time. Um, I know not everybody in the city may agree with the policy that the state passed, but we have an opportunity as a city, uh, to regulate various things like zoning, um, hours of operation and indoor and outdoor, uh, consumption or smoking. And so I wanna make sure that our comments today are geared towards that. Uh, this is a complete new industry for the City of Las Cruces and for all of New Mexico. When we talk about diversifying our economy, um, I personally believe that this is one of the ways that we will do that. I will add that for three straight years, uh, the City Council here in Las Cruces passed resolutions in support and encouraging the state legislature and the governor, uh, to pass a recreational cannabis law. And so this is something as, that as a city, as elected representatives, uh, the majority of the council has supported. And so now we are at a point where we are ready to create jobs. Uh, we are ready to make sure that small businesses in this community can thrive and that local people get a chance to create jobs and to start small businesses. Uh, that is part of my focus. That's the reason I have supported this, uh, strongly. And so I thank you all for your interest and for your comments, uh, and for those three areas of regulation that the city has. Um, it's important that we get your input and your feedback as it comes to those specifics because everything else, uh, we cannot change. It is state law. Uh, but I am excited for this new chapter, uh, for Las Cruces. Um, I also am very aware that the medical, uh, cannabis, medical marijuana industry has been here for many years. Uh, and, uh, hopefully the state law, um, accommodates for those types of users, for those types of patients, uh, to continue to have access. Uh, and one more piece of this that's really important is that there will be a, a 4% uh, tax that the City Council will decide in the future of what we do with that tax, right? Whether we reinvest that, those funds into schools, into drug rehabilitation, uh, into public safety, uh, into any number of issues, uh, even housing, right? We can do a lot with the revenue that we will gain from this new industry. And so that yet has to be decided. Uh, we will continue to have public input and public dialogue on how we use that additional money at the City of Las Cruces. But I wanna thank you all for coming out. I think this is an exciting time for us and I thank you all for your time. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Councilor Vasquez. All right. So, uh, in preparation for questions, Jamie, did we get any cards back from the community?
Francisco has.
Okay. Francisco? Okay. Perfect. And so just for the members of the community who are, who are here, um, if, if, uh, this is something that, we're gonna have interactive questions where you can actually get on the microphone and ask, uh, the staff questions. But just in case, sometimes people like to write questions and not be on the hot mic. Uh, so feel free to just raise your hand and we can get you a pencil and a card, uh, to do so. And we'll try, we, we may not be able to get to all questions, uh, just for time, but we'll do our best to get to, uh, all the questions that we can. Again, we're, we're gonna do, um, we'll take some questions for Q and A and then we'll do breakout sections, uh, sessions. If we're not able to, uh, get to all the questions, um, hopefully you can forgive us, but we, we'll get to your questions, uh, in the breakout sessions. Uh, so why don't we, um, you know, why don't we go to live questions first? And, uh, Carla and, and Jamie, if there's any, uh, cards that you, you have that, you know, you think might be helpful, then we can start with those. But, uh, we'll, um, by the raise a hand if anybody has a question. And then my staff just be ready with, uh, floating mic, ready to go.
Okay. Uh, I have a few questions. So.
Oh, yes, to the person in the back, in the middle.
So in terms of, I mean, so as it typically goes, I have a question mixed with a comment. So in terms of the zoning for the commercial zones, it seems to me that perhaps a city needs to think a little bit more about how an integrated microbusiness might operate because trails are not allowed. If you can't grow in a commercial zone, then an integrated microbusiness would have to have its cultivation elsewhere and the retail place would have to be in the city, right? But as per the law, you can have both in a single premises if that's possible. So I think that adding further red tape and restrictions is overall bad for the city in that sense. And you're already not allowing the residential space to be used for the microproducer. So I encourage a city to look at those C2, C3 zones because there's also a lot of, I mean, I've been talking to realtors in town and there's a lot of space out there for commercial zoning and a lot of, uh, places for lease. So I think it's in the city's best interest to allow microproducers to grow pretty much wherever they can, especially given the barrier of entry of finances and property and legalities to begin with. Um, and then a question I have is, and this is for the, um, perhaps of the, the Fire Department, of how you would expect, inspect greenhouses, um, what the parameters might be for those. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. The, uh, so the, the question for greenhouses is no different than, than any other business. It would be, uh, we're gonna look at things like egress, electrical safety. Uh, we actually inspected a greenhouse last week. So we're just making sure that people can get around in there safely. Emergency lighting, depending on the size of it. Um, nothing special. That's your question? Sure.
Jamie, if I could answer a couple of questions about, uh, the, the zoning that was brought up, just so that, that people have an understanding of where we're leaning. Uh, I think your points are, are, are very good. I, I do want to reiterate that, um, any of the industrial zones, uh, within the city limits would allow for, uh, the vertically-integrated microbusiness. Um, additionally, we have something called the infill development process. Infill development process is when, within, uh, the core of the city. And what that allows is for somebody to, to find a property that is perhaps vacant or underutilized and to propose something that wouldn't otherwise be allowed at that location. It's a free process. It does require a hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission, but it does provide opportunities for those microbusinesses, uh, within the core of the city, uh, if indeed it is, uh, deemed eligible, uh, either being vacant or underutilized.
Thank you, Catherine. Yes, uh, Deputy Chief Daines, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't own a business. Um, but I wanted to remind all the business owners of, as, as this progresses, um, to really be thinking, and I meant to say that when I was upfront, be mindful of your security issues. Um, and we offer, um, uh, crime prevention through environmental design. Okay? So if you can get ahold of us, um, we can actually maybe look at your business once you know where you're at and make some suggestions. We can't mandate that you put in security cameras or anything like that, but we can tell you, "You know what? You might wanna put a light here. You might wanna think about a security camera there." So if we can work together, we can prevent crime at your business and you can, your business can flourish and you don't, your insurance rates stay low and things of that nature. So I forgot to add that. So, um, you know, as, as this progresses, you know, you can contact us and we can give you that information.
Thank you, DC Daines. Okay, Carla, did you have one?
There you go. Can you guys hear me? Gotta hit the on button. Um, my name's Chell Alazon. I'm the former secretary of the New Mexico Medical Campus Patients Advocacy Alliance. We're actually one of the reasons why this happened. Um, my question is like, uh, three different questions. Is the city thinking about sponsoring any kind of cannabis events? Kinda how you guys do with the beer fests and the tequila stuff like that? Cause I think that'd be something cool and a real revenue bringer for the city, being that we're so close to El Paso, Texas and Wadis, who'd get all of those people coming in wanting to participate in something like that. Um, so that would be my first question to you. Um, my second question is actually something I've been wondering and I've been calling the CCD and I tried to call the sheriff, couldn't get anybody in, uh, contact. So certain areas have a smoking area, like Rad has it in the front. Would cannabis be permitted smoking in that area or would that not be a smoking area for cannabis? That would be my second question. Um, and my third question isn't really more or less a question. It's, uh, we have an opportunity to make more money than Albuquerque in this city because of our location. So let's do this right and let's not be too restrictive on this because I've been in this industry for a long time and I've been seeing other states do this industry and we have an opportunity to do it right and be the models that other states look at. We've done that before in the medical program. Other states have used our model before. So let's do that and do it right and let's Las Cruces be on the map versus Albuquerque because they get everything. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Counselor, did you wanna, please?
Thank you, Connie. Uh, yes, I wanna address two of your questions. One is around the, uh, the tourism, the cannabis tourism and potential events. Uh, I really think it's gonna be incumbent upon, uh, businesses and nonprofit organizations, uh, to think about creative ways to draw the tourism, uh, component of our cannabis industry, uh, from Texas and other places, uh, to the city. And so the city will permit, um, I think events, right? Just like we do with, uh, as you mentioned, the beer fest or the tequila fest. And so, um, I, I can't say for sure that the city would host an event like that, but we certainly could permit events organized by a third party. So I, and I-
So I, and I do encourage that because I think that is part of what brings dollars into our community from the outside. To your comment about Albuquerque and El Paso, yes, 40% of the cannabis revenue, recreational cannabis revenue for the entire state of New Mexico is expected to come from the state of Texas. And although I think Clovis stands a good chance to get some folks, I think Las Cruces is really going to be the beneficiary, as well as Sunland Park and Anthony and other places that are probably close to the state line. But we have a lot more to offer, I would say, in an entire experience and more amenities and facilities. And there's a lot of small business opportunities when it comes to the tourism industry. One of the things we did discuss at our last city council meeting was around investments from Visit Las Cruces to actually promote the cannabis industry through the city in ways that we can and that are, you know, that are perhaps appropriate, right, for this type of activity. So, I just wanted to touch base for you on those questions. And I believe regarding the patio, one of our staff members can answer that question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Vasquez. Yeah, I just reiterate from the processing point of view, we do have a temporary event permit that you can get. We don't right now know how the state is going to handle that and so we don't have an answer. And your best bet is to continue to ask because right now I think they're worried about how to get producers going and they're not really, they're not really thinking too much about that part of things. But it's certainly something that we will continue pursuing. And so, on the outdoor, the outdoor smoking area, again, this is going to be a CCD thing. I believe the statute does not give us the ability to, we can regulate where they can be, but the CCD will be determining whether a consumption area is approved. So, there's going to be some movement back and forth. My guess is if you were to ask them, they'd say, oh no, that's all the city. So I apologize if that's the feeling, that we're passing the buck back and forth. It's not the intent, it's just, we're trying to, we're trying to understand the, you know, we don't want to go, we don't want to be a foul of the statute. We want to make sure that we're doing right by Las Cruces and Las Cruces businesses. So, yeah, we will continue to work on that. But my understanding currently, I'm not seeing that as something that's going to be permitted, the outdoor smoking area like that. But again, we are very far from being able to make a final determination and obviously our council will, and where they are on things will weigh in that very heavily.
Thank you, Dr. Pitts, please, in the back. And then we'll come to a gentleman in the front.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Ortega. Since we are a tourist state and it's going to be statewide legalized, what about the three border checks surrounding the city? You can come into the city with marijuana, but what about leaving? You're also going to have people trying to travel to White Sands to hatch and all that, not knowing the laws. They're going to be coming to Cruces to be staying tourist from out of town. What's going to happen there?
Thank you, sir. And I appreciate you bringing this point up. It is quite a conundrum between the federal government and the state government because there are differences on what a scheduled drug is. So, this is still considered, although legalized in the state, this is still considered a drug on the federal level. And so when you pass the checkpoints, these are federal checkpoints and so they can confiscate at any time, like this gentleman said. There are challenges with this, if this is to be an economic development opportunity here for tourism and businesses. And so, the challenge is that lies, if you're trying to transport samples to the only labs that we have in the state, they're up north. And you have to have quality control right now. We have labs? Where's the lab? I've heard the only two that we have are in Santa Fe and Albuquerque, but if there's another one? Okay, okay, well, great. And good. So, but what I've been told by the state, that there's two right now up north. And so the challenge is, if that were true, you would have to take quality control, pass these checkpoints. And there would be challenges and there would be issues, including distribution. One of the things for economic development is we have an opportunity here, if we were to move forward with these zones in Las Cruces, in the southern region of New Mexico. And this is the opportunity to build a local ecosystem here, from seed to table, seed to retail. And so that's one of the opportunities here that is an opportunity within these federal checkpoints. And so, you know, part of it is, with the checkpoints, economic development wise, you use what you have. And that's kind of how the economic development department, I know, sees it, is you double down on what you have here in the southern region of New Mexico. I don't know, Payares, if you wanted to share anything? He's Deputy Chief for Economic Development, Francisco Payares, please.
Thanks, Ikani. I was going to talk from my side, but it doesn't turn on. Francisco Payares with Economic Development. We attended a conference regarding cannabis in Albuquerque about three weeks ago. And in this conference, the individuals in Albuquerque didn't see our county as a potential source for the manufacturing nor a potential source for the production. And perhaps they see that perspective as they cannot move it, not precisely because of those checkpoints. I was seeing it from another perspective, that it is the perfect place for the other production that you're aiming for the sales, right? They would want to capture the Texas market, they would want to capture, I mean, if you look at it in terms of population, just a hundred mile radius, we're probably capturing about 3 million people. So, I think that the perspective that they were having was a bit wrong, but where they see that obstacle for us, it's kind of like an opportunity. And I think that the potential business growth in that area seems to be a lot, a lot larger. I don't know if you've noticed, but in El Paso, for instance, you have a lot more malls than in your traditional US city. And the population in El Paso should not be able to sustain that amount of malls. And the reason for that is because they're probably capturing a larger market than themselves. That is potentially what can be expected regarding cannabis in Las Cruces for that specific aspect. So, that's one of the key points that was discussed. And so, the federal government is the federal government and there's nothing we can do about it. But the expectation is that Las Cruces will potentially serve a larger market than Las Cruces itself. Thanks, Ikani.
Thank you, Francisco. Please, gentleman up front.
Thank you. My name is Brandon Eman and I have a question and a comment. My question is, is the personal production license now negated? Does it make sense to have a medical production license with the fact that you can now grow in home? And the comment that I have is, to address, or at least help to address, the potential demand coming in April is, if there'd be a way to allow medical production licensed growers, provide surplus of their homegrown product to the dispensaries.
All right, thank you for the question. I defer to my team, if anything.
I'll try to take a crack at this. So, what you're asking is if there was a surplus in the medical marijuana being grown, could you then sell that to a retailer or other type of store to distribute, correct?
Correct.
I think that from a zoning or land use standpoint, I don't think that's problematic. I do think from a state licensing standpoint, that that's something that they would have to answer. Because for me, retail is retail, right? Pharmacy is a pharmacy. And really, it's this transfer of goods and will that be allowed at the state level? And we can try to find out for you, but I don't think that's something that we as a city can answer.
Thank you, Catherine. Please, Dr. Pitts.
Thank you. If I may, I would recommend that you go to the state's website and put that comment in the rulemaking section because if they haven't dealt with that, then they need to. And actually, as I read the rulemaking section, there aren't enough substantive comments and there's a lot of, so they would like some real comments like that, that might be something they do with their rulemaking.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other questions?
Hello, my name's Andrew Gladen. I have a very simple question, forgive me if it's using an industry term, but when it does become, like when we can open a business to sell marijuana, will it be for profit or will it be like some states, nonprofit? For example, will we be able to turn a profit and keep the profits? Or does it have to be reinvested into the community? That question.
Hold on, answer it.
It is for profit for the recreation, yes. The difference from the medical, I think, was for nonprofits, in this case, it is for profit. And perhaps an additional thing that I wanted to mention is, just like with any business, having a business plan, talking to your lawyers, talking to your tax specialists, talking to your bankers, that those are still primary aspects to consider. That's still a primary aspect to consider. Having a business plan, talking early to your lawyers, talking early to your accountants, talking early with the individuals that would support you throughout this entire process is primary, just like with any other business.
Thank you, Francisco. We have another question. Carla, please.
My name is Randy. My question is, we're still going through the time, manner and use, I'm still trying to remember all that, but what are the thoughts on time? How is that going to work? Are you going to still use that as a limiting factor? Will things be only in the afternoons? Will there be a close-off time like there is with alcohol sales? How is the city thinking about dealing with that right now?
Thank you. For the question, I'll defer to Community Development.
Thank you. Again, at this point in time, we aren't implementing any time limits in terms of when people can sell. That's not something that we've added to our codes, simply because that's not something that any other industry from a zoning standpoint is subject to.
We have another question, Carla? Same gentleman in the back, please.
Hi, Randy again. And the other question I have is the special use. That has to happen because we have a restriction of 1,000 feet between every business type, I assume, not just retail. And so, my next, it's a double stage question.
Just before we move on, it's just for the retail establishments.
Just for retail.
It does not apply to the industry establishments.
Okay. So then from there on, it has to come to an agreement between businesses, the two businesses that are there, whether or not they're going to come closer, and then that has to come up to the city as a council.
So, from a land use perspective, when things like this occur, if there was one business already established and the next business came in and let's just say, it really was a good area for these types of businesses, it was a couple of blocks away, and there really wasn't an opportunity to fit anywhere else, you wouldn't necessarily have to negotiate with that other business. It's always, it's always a good idea to communicate with your competition so that you can get support and it won't be, you won't have opposition during your public hearing. You don't have to. Ultimately, what would happen is you would come in for an application, we would review it, that particular neighbor would most likely be aware, because we do public notification processes, and they would have an opportunity to either support that or to oppose it during a public hearing.
Counselor?
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Ikani. That is not set in stone. That is staff's recommendation. So 1,000 feet is what is being recommended. Ultimately, city council will approve that distance. I suggest if folks have ideas on other appropriate distances, please bring them forth and please provide comment. One of the things you noticed on Ikani's slide back here is that the municipalities or some of the cities that had that 1,000-foot distance are much larger than the city of Las Cruces. My thoughts are that we have very limited retail opportunities, or at least more limited, smaller square footage, plazas and other, so, you know, if you think it should be 500 feet, 600 feet, again, to allow the economic opportunity and not allow more small businesses within the appropriate distance, right, then please provide that public comment. But it's not set in stone yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vasquez. Got another question from a gentleman in the back?
Do you mind? I just wanted to touch base on what you just talked about with the distancing. I mean, there's bars who are right next door to each other, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to do that with cannabis. Like you said, we have limited space, we're not as big as other cities. I think, you know, if they want to be next door, they should be allowed to be next door. I mean, if they want to be downtown, which is going to be a huge attraction for the city with people visiting, if there's dispensaries right next door to each other, I think that'd be a better idea than 1,000 or 500 feet, you know, may the best business win, in my opinion.
I appreciate it. You know, this is a perfect time. Counselor Vasquez, you'll be here for a breakout session and so if anyone, this is the perfect time to come, talk with Counselor Vasquez and share your thoughts. So, those who would like to share some thoughts with him as he's looking for that, this is the forum. So, we'll wait for breakout sessions. Just wanted to see, before, there are some questions that people took the time to write, some to PD, before we head out to breakout sessions. So I have two questions for DC Daines, hopefully you got a floating mic, ready to go? Or you can, you can speak loud. All right. So we went over this, but Deputy Chief Daines, I'll just let you say, because you're so eloquent, how is driving under the influence going to be determined?
Well, okay, by state statute. So, we would investigate a driving under the influence, no matter what it is. And I want to maybe kind of educate what state statute says, okay, which has been in law for quite a long time, nothing has changed with the legalization of cannabis. Driving under the influence says, if you are impaired to the slightest degree by anything legal or illegal, so if you've had a little too much Benadryl, that's a bad example, but you understand what I mean. Or, you know, maybe, you know, you're taking a painkiller or Vicodin or something, it says you shouldn't drive, but you do. Okay, so anything that impairs you to the slightest degree. Now, obviously, we have to have what's called probable cause to arrest you, okay? So, you would have to go through standardized field sobriety tests, okay, just like anybody else would. And then, at that point, you would be read the New Mexico Implied Consent Act and you would submit to a breath test or blood test, or you could refuse. There's a whole lot of extra other stuff there, but hopefully none of you will have to ever be in that situation, so we don't want to worry about it. And then, now with cannabis, it is a little different because obviously, there's not going to be a breath result unless you mix that cannabis with an alcoholic beverage. Okay? So at that point, there's a couple of different things, depending on the staffing that we have. We would, which we've been doing, if you were driving in the influence of meth or cocaine or anything else, we have a drug recognition expert, you would have to consent to have that evaluation done. You would be charged appropriately, whatever it would be, or not charged. And then, that would go up to, through the criminal process. So, the actual investigation, we have to have a reason to stop you, okay? Or even if you're not driving, let's say you're passed out in the Whataburger drive-thru or something like that, that would be okay for us to at least make contact with you. So, but it would just be like any other impaired driving. So, we have to have a reason, you have to fail the subfield sobriety tests, okay? So if you're pulled over, I want to assure you some other things. If you're pulled over, hello, I'm Deputy Chief Daines, I'm actually working patrol tonight, not from behind my desk anymore, okay? And I've pulled you over, just the odor of marijuana of itself, okay? I can talk to you about it. That's one of the few times that we can ask you about it because you're operating a motor vehicle. Does that make sense? Because that's reasonable suspicion for us to think you might be impaired, okay? Otherwise, like in public, other situations, the odor of marijuana itself, that's not criminal. Does that make sense? Okay? So, we're going to talk to you, see what we can discover. You know, you may say, hey, I have my buddy, you know, he was smoking weed in the car, you know, I just dropped him off, I was his designated driver. So we'll go through that investigation, just like we would for alcohol, okay? And then, it would proceed through field sobriety tests, things of that nature, and go through the criminal system. So, nothing really has changed through the state law, so we don't change anything we're doing specifically for cannabis.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Daines.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Daines. It is now 7 o'clock and I want to apologize if we weren't able to get to your questions, but we will go into breakout sessions. And this will really, we'll, we'll end with breakout sessions. But before you leave, we do have, we do have these tables set up by Community Development. Well, you'll have the opportunity to put up some dots. Catherine will explain. We're essentially doing a in-person survey right here that we're going to do at, at all these community engagement forums, this town hall meeting and the next one in August. And then you can talk to Economic Development, you can talk to building, you can talk to law enforcement, you can talk to our fire department as well. So we'll be here if there's any questions. But we'll have, Catherine, could you explain what's going to happen at your table?
Sure, absolutely. So this is an opportunity to let us know where you think certain types of cannabis businesses should be located within the city. We have a board that's specific to manufacturing, so that would be extraction, things of that nature. We have a board specific to cultivation and we have a board specific to retail. What we're asking that you do is that for each of these, on manufacturing and cultivation, if you could take three dots and three dots only to indicate where your top priorities would be for these types of uses. And then on retail, five dots, please, per person, to indicate where generally the areas you'd like to see these, these are your top areas. It doesn't mean it's going to limit it to that. A couple of other things, we're also going to be taking notes. So if there's specific concerns or questions like the 1,000 foot buffer, please do let us know so that we can write those down, so that we can be sure to let both our planning and zoning commissioners know, as well as city council, what those concerns are so that we can seek out any other alternatives moving forward.
And thank you, Catherine. And is there a section for if they're undecided or don't want it zoned? Just maybe put it off.
There is. We have a little box that basically indicates, oh, I don't want this anywhere. And we have pins available and we can handwrite on those maps as well if it's just, you know, I, I don't care. And we can input that as well, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Catherine. All right. So now's the time to please reach out with any questions to the Community Development table, to our Building Director, Economic Development, and to our Police Department and Fire Chief. Thank you.
Hey, how's it going?
Congratulations, you're doctor, man.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.